Good evening. I'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, February 14th to order. At this time, we'd like to ask for you to stand and have invocation by Reverend Roger Willis, Trinity Free Methodist Church, and please remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, thank you for your presence with us tonight, and for your love and your care and your presence with us every day of our lives. Thank you for this council that governs us. Thank you for the first responders who protect us. Thank you for each citizen who does his part to make this community a better community. Help us, Lord, to serve you in every way that we can. We pray, Lord, for our town, our state, and our nation, and for this world. Help us to be healers. Help us to be bearers of light. Help us, Lord, to serve you in every capacity that we can. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Roll call, Mr. Gurney.
You okay?
Did you turn the mic back over?
Yeah, I got it.
No.
Thought it was. Okay. Span.
Present.
Minchuck.
Here.
Yuzlak.
Present.
Baron.
Here.
Pettit.
Here.
Lamarcus.
Here.
And Hardaway.
Here.
We have seven present. We have a quorum. Uh, additions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. I would like to congratulate the Maryville Girls Basketball Team for winning their fifth sectional in a row. Even though they weren't as successful at the regionals, they did. This is their fifth year that they have been able to win the sectionals. And also, on the same note, I'd like to congratulate the Andrayan Girls Basketball Team for their third year in a row of winning the sectionals. Okay. Consent agenda, accounts payable registered voucher approval for February 14th, along with approval of Town Council minutes from January 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion sent by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that we approve the accounts payable registered voucher for February 14th, 2017, along with the Town Council minutes from January 24th. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Um, what is the finance? Councilman Pettit.
Mr. President, Bruce and I were approached by the Crossroads Regional Chamber of Commerce. They recently purchased a vacant building and are embarking on a capital campaign to renovate that building over on 84th Drive. It's the old Lake County Teachers Credit Union between Maryville Road and Broadway. And they had asked us about the town's contribution to that capital campaign. And since we have all the businesses in Maryville are members of the Chamber of Commerce, the Crossroads Chamber is over 675 businesses strong. It's probably the second largest in the state of Indiana. In fact, you were involved in those meetings as well. We discussed what the town would be willing to pledge. At this time, I'd make a motion that we pledge $20,000, $10,000 in the next two years to come out of Maryville Road Tiff. Bruce or Broadway?
Um, it could come out of either.
Either.
There's funds available for Park Council Baron. And we've already looked at the finances.
I know, but I just want to make sure before we take any more money out of the Maryville Tiff money, or out of the Tiff fund, that there's going to be money that I can pave in my ward and get the roads that I need to get done so I can pretty much give my paving money that I get back to the town so people, the other council members, can get their roads paved that they need to get paved.
Okay.
So I really wish you would take it out of the Broadway Tiff.
Take it to Broadway Tiff.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with either.
I was gonna say, let's split the baby, Ken and Ken. But I'm okay with it.
Well, I still got a sort of road in that's...
I know, I'm okay with it.
We don't know how much that's gonna cost either.
(Coughs) Second.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Minchuck. We allocate $20,000 to the Crossroads Chamber, $10,000 per year for two years. Is there any other discussion?
For their capital campaign.
For their capital campaign. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Anything else on the budget and finance?
That's all I have unless Mr. Spires or Mr. Gurney have anything.
Dean, Bruce?
No, I don't have anything.
Congratulations, Bruce, on becoming the grandfather.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. What are they gonna call you? Pappy?
Grandpa.
Grandpa?
Grandpa.
I'm calling you Pappy.
Public Works, Councilman Minchuck.
No report at this time, sir.
Uh, Council Affairs, Councilwoman Yuzlak.
No report.
Personnel Policy, Employee Benefits, Councilwoman Baron.
Yes, I am in talks with three different prescription companies as to who will give the town of Maryville the best discount without costing us anything.
Anymore.
Anymore for the town employees.
Okay. Keep us posted. Public Safety, Councilwoman Yuzlak.
No report.
Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
I'll give it to Jean.
Good evening, Council. Just a note, I had put a couple of pieces of paper in front of you. One is, at the top it says compare sites. This is data from the Erie Lekewana Trail, and it's just to show you that more people use the Maryville portion of the trail than Crown Point, Hammond Highland, Shererville, Monon, Griffith, Hobart, Portage, and Shererville. The trail counters, the data from the trail counters just from May through October showed that we had 75,594 trail users. That's higher than any other community. On the second page, we're in a project with NERC through a grant on branding the Erie Lekewana Trail. And if you look at the first welcome sign, what we'd like to do is share the sign with Crown Point. So when you come to the Maryville section, one part of the sign, or one side of the sign would say "Welcome to Maryville," the other side would say "Welcome to Crown Point." And then at 91st, we'll have the pedestrian regulatory sign so people are aware that there is a busy road there. And then there will be mile markers on that trail every half mile. This branding project and these signs will be throughout all of the Erie Lekewana Trail. My question to the council and to Bruce is, the vehicular trailhead, oh, and by the way, the prices that are under these, we just pay a portion of that, 20%, because of the grant. And then, as far as the welcome sign of Crown Point does want to share it with us, then it would just be 10% them and 10% us. But the question I have for the council and for Bruce is, do you want to use the vehicular trailhead sign for that little parking area that's off of Whitcomb?
Oh, you mean where that stone parking is?
I don't think anybody uses that.
I think, yeah, they'll use it from time to time.
So, I don't know, since Erie Lekewana, I mean, we get the most trail usage out of any community, so does Maryville want to mark that parking area? I think you could fit maybe four or six cars in there.
Yeah, because I believe it's actually paved, and if it's paved, we could probably utilize it.
It is paved.
It's gravel.
It's gravel. Yeah, it's gravel.
All right, we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
I use that trail almost every day.
You're one of the 75,000 users, and I believe John is too.
Oh, yes, I see you all the time.
Anything else on the parking?
That's all I have right now, thank you, unless you have any questions for me.
I've got a question for you, for your, how are you coming on your concert for this summer?
I did contact him, the, and I forgot his name off the top of my head.
Attorney Deppi?
Yes.
Okay.
I gave him the date that we're looking at, I believe it's July 21st. And right now, he's in the process of seeing what groups or bands are available for that date. Once he gets those groups available, then we'll enter into an agreement with them. So we're definitely moving forward.
Okay, good. They're talking old school, Don.
Yeah.
Spaniels, drifters.
Oh, definitely.
Yes, I figured that would get you, pique your interest. Thank you, good report. Environmental Affairs, Councilwoman Baron.
I don't have anything, Matt.
Yeah, we're deep in design mode on several projects, including alleviating flooding on Sunset Road, Southmore Park subdivision drainage improvements, the Metodale Basin that'll be adjacent to Lateral Six, 54th and Adams, pretty much redoing all the drainage work and design on 54th Place, and Independent Street. So these are projects that will be put out to bid this year. We also want to include 56 and Grant, the intersection there. I know for years and years, it's been troubling. We've kind of been limping in along with maintenance, but I think it's time, and I met with Christopher Birkin sharing their submitted proposal on complete redesign and additional storage to the west where the Hickory Ridge like apartments are, I'm meeting with them this Friday. So we're looking at complete redesign for that particular intersection. So it's gonna be a busy construction season, and as a result, we're gonna be transferring as much money as we can into contractual services to do as many projects as we can this year. And that's all I have.
Okay, and you do have 50/50 in Monroe Madison?
Yes, yes.
Have you had a conversation with Mr. Spires yet?
Yes, I have. That was the curbing that had to be added for that corner. I was out with Robinson today. We removed the trees that were in the way there, that were lifting up the curb and causing that impalement to occur in that corner. So that's all gonna get done. It's at least 100 feet, linear feet of curbing that would have to be added to the paving program. So I already talked to Bruce about that.
You're aware of that, Mr. Spires?
Yes, we've had those conversations.
Is it gonna happen?
We'll need to do it under paving, or I believe we still have additional sidewalks that need to be replaced this year in that subdivision that are bad. Okay, I mean, yeah, because the problem is that ward has been standing there for
years. And, you know, when it rains, you would think that, it just rained when you ride by there. So, thank you, appreciate that. Elections, Public Relations, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
No report.
Economic Development, Councilman Pettit.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, we have a Economic Development Committee meeting for next Tuesday at 5:30 or 6:00, Bruce?
Economic Development meeting's at 5:30, and the RDC meeting would be following.
Okay. And that EDC is to hear a tax abatement petition.
Okay. Uh, Utility Liaison, Councilman Span.
No report.
Abandoned Properties, Councilman Hardaway. Where are we at, John, as far as these lots?
5612, 5618, 56...
You know them all from the top of your head.
Still waiting for the Board of Commissioners to reissue a new tax sale certificate to the town. I've been in touch with Tramal Rags on it.
Okay. I guess the thing is, the weather's starting to get warm, and at some point, we would like to get those lots consolidated so that we can put a for-sale sign out there and sell them. So, anything that you can do to expedite that, we'd really appreciate. That concludes reports. General orders, no first reading ordinances, second reading ordinance, and ordinance, Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending ordinance 16-38, and pay for employees of the Town of Maryville, Indiana for the calendar year 2017, or the 1701.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve ordinance 61701 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, and because this is a second reading ordinance, we'd like to open it up for public comment for anyone that has any comments on ordinance 17-01. Any public comment on ordinance 17-01? Any public comment on ordinance 17-01? Roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Minchuck.
Yes.
Yuzlak.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes. Motion carries, 7-0. That concludes second reading. Ordinance says resolutions.
Oh, I want to make a motion that we move Resolution 1704 to the top of the line.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Pettit, that we move Resolution 17-04 up in place of 17-02 and 17-03. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 17-04, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, rescinding Resolution 15-03, approved on January 13th, 2015, and rescinding its January 13th, 2015, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement for the South Shore Railroad, Westlake Corridor project, and rescinding this January 13th, 2015, approval of a pledged revenues exhibit pledging 22% of the town's annual distribution of county economic development income tax funds to the project, and reapproving the interlocal cooperation agreement for the South Shore Railroad, Westlake Corridor project, and approving a pledged revenue exhibit pledging 8% of the town's annual distribution of county economic development income tax funds to the project effective March 1st, 2017.
At this time, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we table Resolution 1704 for further discussion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Pettit, that we table Resolution 17-04 till a later date. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President, Congressman Biskowski is in the audience. I did mention to him that we want to sit with him personally and go through this issue that has been there for now two years, I guess, outstanding. And obviously, Pete will be accommodating. We'll work with his schedules as he goes back to Washington. Congressman, thank you for coming tonight. I think we need more time to discuss this.
I think so, too. So, and we'd like to, within the next couple of weeks there, Congressman, if that's possible.
And I will do my very best. I will have the office call the council, and as soon as we can arrange it, I would be delighted to be here.
Thank you.
I also want to thank the town for thinking outside of our community exclusively in your cooperation with Erie Transit Authority to improve mass transit drop northwest to Indiana by looking on the road.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Resolution 17-02, a resolution of the Town of Maryville Town Council authorizing a request of transfer from the Lake County Board of Commissioners of real property located at 5601 Broadway, Maryville, Indiana.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve Resolution 17-02. Is there any discussion? The reason for this 5601 Broadway is that if you write down Broadway, it's on the southeast corner, and it's like a little plot of land. And we, right now, we currently maintain that piece of property. And so if we gotta maintain it, then we might as well own it, and we can do a better job of maintaining it rather than cutting it and thinking that we're going to lean somebody's property that's never gonna pay us anyway. So that's the reason why I have the request to secure this land. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Resolution 17-03, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the remainder repayment of a temporary loan as of 1/30/17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that we approve Resolution 17-03. Any discussion?
This, Mr. President, appears Gene and Bruce puts $450,000 back in the Maryville Road Tiff project fund, is that correct?
Yeah, this is the final repayment. Remember last year, we loaned 17th Street?
Yep. All right, so it'll give more money into the Maryville Road Tiff Fund.
That's good.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Resolution 17-05, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2017 budget within the general fund.
So moved. Second.
Uh, motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that we approve Resolution 17-05. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 17-06, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2017 budget within the general fund.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Span, that we approve Resolution 17-06. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution 17-07, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2017 budget within the casino.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilman Span, that we approve Resolution 17-03. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes Resolutions, BCA Actions. First case number Z43E14-1116. The petitioner is Mr. Singh. The owner is Frank H. Halfman. The request for special exception approval for the proposed, for a proposed gas station and convenience store, 7269 Broadway, C3 Highway Commercial. Mr. Singh.
Come up to the mic right here, friend.
Staff report, please.
Petitioner is requesting special exception approval for a proposed four-pub gas station with a 36 feet by 80 feet convenience store. There will be two existing entrances from Broadway and one 73rd Avenue entrance. There will also be 16 parking spaces on the sides of the building. The petitioner will demolish the existing building, and there will be sewer availability on the property. The proposed gas station and convenience store hours of operation will be 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and will employ approximately four people. The petition was deferred on November 16. Petitioner was requested to resubmit the fact-finding portion of the special exception application for this petition only, at this location only, for this use only.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve Z43E14-1116. I've spoken with Mr. Singh, and I'm gonna add the following conditions, that an eight-foot privacy fence be installed the entire length of the east property line from the sidewalk on 73rd Avenue all the way north to his north property line, and also that there, no cooked food will be permitted on the premise, which includes pizza and chicken. He will be allowed a hot dog roller, and it is all packaged food, chips, candy, et cetera, pop, water, that sort of thing, and coolers, but there'd be no cooking on the premises.
I have a question.
Okay.
What kind of fence can he have? Could it be a wooden fence, PVC fence, fence, or does it matter?
Uh, between residential and commercial, I was concerned about the height. I didn't get into the material yet, but if we wanna, if we wanna make it PVC, I'm acceptable to that because the neighbor I spoke with was concerned about privacy. And as I told Mr. Singh, I have to be concerned about the business to the north and the people to the east, so...
I'm just, was asking, because you are talking about residential, and I know how wood fences go.
Yep.
You won't take care of it, but in time, they do.
I will amend my condition, Mr. President, to include Councilwoman Baron's an eight-foot PVC privacy fence, and then again, the no cooked food condition.
Second.
Uh, motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, uh, Baron, sorry, that we approve case number Z43E14-1116.
I get better looking every day.
Six, I'm telling you. Um, is there any other discussions? Are you okay with those?
Yes, sir. Positions.
Just, a couple things are on my mind. I understand that 73rd and Broadway is a very busy intersection in this town. It's dead center of the town. We get a lot of traffic through there. You said, and I, I'm sorry, I know you read it, but you said, how many entrances off Broadway?
Uh, I think Broadway, we get one or...
You said, I think it was two off Broadway, 173rd.
One on 73rd, yeah. Okay.
We have only one on 73rd, you know.
And are you gonna be a 24-hour establishment, or are you gonna be close in the evening?
Midnight to 12:00.
Five to midnight.
Five to midnight, okay.
Five to midnight.
Okay. That's all I have at this time.
Anybody else have anything else? Roll call, Mr. Gurney.
Span.
Yes.
Minchuck.
Yes.
Yuzlak.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes. Motion carries, 7-0.
0. Welcome to town.
Thank you.
View Outdoor Advertising, View Outdoor Advertising Owner, request for variance of use approval. The purpose is to add digital faces on both sides of existing billboard sign. Location, East Lincoln Highway, zoning is C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District.
Hello, Attorney Mike Anderson, on behalf of View Outdoor Advertising LLC.
Uh, staff report, please.
Petitioner is requesting a variance of use approval to modify existing off-premise advertising billboard sign by adding digital faces on both sides of existing billboard. The advertising billboard sign is located at approximately East Lincoln Highway in the C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
Mr. President, this is in my ward, but at this time, I'm going to, Michael, I will abstain from the vote because of the, my employment factor. However, I will ask the rest of the council, Mr. Buscemi, I hope I'm not out of line after, while I'm abstaining, to bring to the rest of my colleagues that my company offers space available advertising for community events. I leave that to you, Michael, to determine, you do with that what you will.
View Outdoor also does allow for community events to be posted on the sign as well as Amber Alerts, in the event that there is not a current paying customer at the present time. But View Outdoor does allow those to, those certain community events, like I said, and Amber Alerts as well.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Going to subject to their condition.
Yeah, we're gonna do subject to their condition.
Thank you. Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that we approve Z1UV1-0117. Any other discussions? Roll call.
Span.
Aye.
Minchuck.
Yes.
Yuzlak.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes, motion carries, 7-0.
I abstain, Gene.
I wrote you down.
Okay, you should've called me.
How many times do you want to say?
He usually calls, if he would've said Patalas, I probably would've been able to abstain, right?
There you go.
Yeah.
Never gonna live that one up.
You thought I forgot.
I'm just telling you. Uh, moving right along. Uh, moving right along. Case number Z2E1-0117. Uh, petitioner is Crystal L. Taylor Hutch. The owner is REMI Companies, requests special exception approval uh, for proposed youth services and counseling site, 5437 Broadway. It's in a C2 Community Commercial Zoning District. Good evening.
Good evening.
Staff report, please.
Petitioner is requesting special exception approval for a youth services and counseling site to be located at 5437 Broadway in a C2 Community Commercial, Community Zoning District to be known as Youth With a Purpose Incorporated. The proposed site will be, is a 501 C3 organization that provides a safe and structured environment for disadvantaged families, youth adults, at risk, and underprivileged youth. All clients will be seen by appointment, and after services have been provided, clients will vacate the premises. The organization has implemented a set of highly effective security measures to ensure that the safeties of the families being served as well as the surrounding community. Staff and support team members have received formal education and training in their fields of services. The fire inspector has performed a occupancy inspection at the proposed site. Clients will utilize the front lot for parking using approximately four spaces. Support team members will use the rear parking lot to the east of the building. Utilities and road accesses are already in place for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
I'll make a motion to approve?
Second.
Uh, motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilman Span that will approve case number Z2E1-0117. Is there any discussion? It's in my ward. I've had conversations with the petitioner. I'm open.
Eastern west side of Broadway, Rich?
It's on the east side of Broadway.
East side of Broadway.
Yeah, it's, it's right across from Broadway Plaza, that we can't, never get nobody into. Any other discussion? Mr. Span? Okay, you had that look. I didn't know.
That's that sweet rose, somebody.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, case number Z3E2-0117. Ex- Exto's Properties LLC. The owner is PM REO LLC, requests special exception approval. Purpose full-service dining and restaurant, 7454 Broadway. Zoning is the C2 Community Commercial Zoning District. Uh, good evening, Mr. Sabato. Um, staff report, please.
Petitioner is requesting special exception approval for a full-service dining and restaurant in a C2 Community Zoning District. To be located at 7454 Broadway. The property and building was operated as a family restaurant since constructed in 1987. Originally minor Dunn, then Broadway Cafe. The proposed restaurant will have 137 seats, 78 parking spaces, two handicap parking. There will be approximately eight to nine employees. Hours of operation will be 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. The property has electric, gas, Indiana American Water, and MCD sewer services available. For this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
Mr. President, I make an adamant approval of this project. Thank you. Thank you, folks, very much. It sat way too long, and very pleased to see that building taken.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Span that we approve, uh, case number Z3E2-001. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes-
As proud as we are.
That concludes BGA Action. Old business? Any old business? Any new business?
I have a couple of things underneath new business. I would like to make sure that everybody welcomes Bill Laird to the planning department. Hi, Bill.
Hi, Mike. I know it's Bill. I could call him Mike every day, he'd send to me.
Okay, that's one.
And then I also would like to make an announcement to the town council that I am very, very excited about. Um, in talking with the Maryville Crew Car Wash, they are going to participate with the Boys and Girls Club of Northwest Indiana for the Boys and Girls Club Crew fundraiser. The Crew Car Wash will provide a free ultimate wash, which is a $20 value car wash on Friday and Saturday, and it's going to be from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 at night, 8:00 p.m. To any customer who comes to the Maryville facility at 501 West 81st Avenue. Customers are encouraged to contribute cash or credit donations, as the Crew Car Wash will donate 100% of the proceeds back to the Boys and Girls Club of Northwest Indiana. Their Crew Car Wash will take a dollar, $5, $10, $20, $50, whatever you can give to the Boys and Girls Club. The money that is raised during the car wash will benefit six clubs in Northwest Indiana, Cedar Lake, East Chicago, Catherine House, John Will Anderson, In Gary Hammond, Lake Station, and Maryville. I will also be taking my PTO time at my job to volunteer my service on Friday, and I will be just donating my time on Saturday as well.
Is this it?
This Saturday, Friday, and Saturday.
Thank you. Um-
Can I, can I donate, uh, $20?
You have to go there and do it.
Just go over there and do it. Get your car washed, same time.
It's a good policy.
She will wash it for you. My car is always clean.
That's okay. You can get a cleaner.
There you go.
Don't, don't be difficult. Um, anything else under, uh, new business? Uh, one thing is that, uh, Mr. Guerenti has brought this to my attention a couple of times, is that if anybody's had the opportunity to go down, uh, 61st Avenue and take a look at the Burger King that's been renovated, renovated there, they've done excellent job on it. Uh, there's a couple of other businesses there that we probably need to look at and see if we can encourage them to do the same thing. But that Burger King really looks good right now.
Along the same lines, Mr. Hardaway, and I'm sure, uh, Chris is pretty proud of this. We've got someone in the Kmart building.
Right, yeah.
Which is, which is huge, as large as that is, and, and the view of that on US 30, uh, would like to welcome, uh, in, in Home, is that what?
At Home.
I saw it on the building report from Sheila. Um, that's, that's phenomenal that we don't have to worry. Fortunately, Century Plaza, we have some, we have some worries there, but-
That's another conversation.
Exactly, yeah.
That's another conversation. No, but, yeah, that, we are to be, uh, we should be proud because that, that building wasn't empty long at all. I think that once Kmart decided to close, then at Home was right there saying, okay, we put us in coach, we know the place.
Yeah, if, if we only have them on Broad, we can concentrate on Broadway. If we start getting Broadway and Taff and 30 with vacant buildings, then we're-
Then we got a problem.
We got a problem. So again, thank you, folks.
You know, I, I got one. I never seen so many Kmart advertisement on TV till that one closed. Before, I never seen the advertisement Kmart.
That's because they have more money.
Oh.
That, that concludes new business. At this time, we would like to open it up for public comment. If there's any public comment, we'd like for you to come forward, state your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Any public comment? Any public comment? Announcements. Environmental Resource Committee meeting February 16th at 2:00 p.m. Town Hall offices will be closed with the exception of emergency services, February 20th, uh, 2017, in observance of President's Day. Economic Development Committee meeting February 21st, 2017, at 5:30. Redevelopment Commission meeting February 21st, 2017, immediately following the Economic Development Committee meeting at 5:30. Plan Commission meeting February 21st, 2017, at 6:30. The Board of Zoning Appeals meeting February 22nd, uh, 2017, at 6:30. Abandoned Blighted Properties Committee meeting February 23rd, 2017, at 10:30 a.m. Our next town council meeting is February 28th, 2017, at 6:30. One more bit of business.
What was you doing, Jared?
Second.
We're done. Thank you.